Always, always need a lot of prayer.
I know, lots of it, thank you.
We should have like a request time. Prayer request time.
It's got a pocket, put those in America in this pocket. It's too funny.
We're live? Okay, welcome to our Kingsburg City Council regular meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And before we get started, I'd like to invite Pastor Tim Boynton to deliver our invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, what a, what a privilege to be able to, to stand in this room with the leaders of our community and, and pray for them. Lord, I just so appreciate them. I appreciate their time. I appreciate the energy and the talent that they bring for the, the good of our community. And Lord, I just pray that what happens here tonight, that you would be present, that you would give insight and direction, and that you would bring blessing upon all the decisions that are made. Lord, we thank you for this community. We thank you for everyone that is not only here, maybe even grew up here, but we also thank you for the people that are coming here, and we pray that we would make them feel welcome. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call this meeting to order, and Madam Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Councilmember Joe Hurtado.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Brandon Purcell, Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Roman.
Here.
And Mayor Lourie.
I'm here, thank you. Item number two is to approve our agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, we have none listed under presentations tonight. Item four, public comment. This is a time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anyone in chamber that would like to come up for public comment? Come on up.
Uh, darling, I'm a resident. I just want to thank you and the city for starting the construction on the crosswalk. I really appreciate it. I told my girls like ten years ago, I says, do not jaywalk there. Take the crosswalk way down by Reagan and then cross north, you know? And so one day I got off of work early, and I parked my car up the street, and Michelle, she jaywalked, and then she saw my car and she goes. Well, now there'll be a crosswalk there. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jason?
Uh, my name is Jason Garcia. I'm representing Kingsburg Youth Baseball Association, and I'm actually here tonight to welcome the mayor and the council and city manager and city staff as well to our opening ceremonies, which will take place Saturday, February twenty-sixth at four thirty PM at Sepharion Field, and we'll be also highlighting our Hank Cashfield that you guys are aware of, that we all kind of helped contribute to build and make this a reality. So, um, I do want to, the board did want me to come tell you all again, thank you very much for, um, helping us with this project. It has been a blessing for KYBA, and I'm actually glad to actually just tell you quickly that our registrations have been up dramatically. So, we have five divisions. Those five divisions, we sold out in about thirty to forty-five days this year, which is, I've been doing this, it's my eighth season, it's never happened. So, we are, are expanding our teams. Our coaches pitch up ten teams. We've got eight teams. Our Babe Ruth program, which, um, the new field is playing on, our majors are going to be playing on this field this year for the first time ever, so, um, they're going to be there. Our Babe Ruth program has, um, picked up. We now have eight teams this year. We had six last year, so it is booming for us. So, I want to thank you guys on behalf of my, my board. Thank you. Thank you to Alex Henderson for his help as well. Daniel Galvez, who was tremendous also with communication. So, I just want to really just thank staff and, and you guys for the support. It's been very incredible. Also, would like to just tell you as well that we are with this new field. We are getting more tournaments booked, and tentatively we're in talks, but nothing's been signed, but we are looking at a, another regionals tournament coming, which is through Cal Ripken. We get, uh, cities coming from Guam, Hawaii, Utah, so we're bringing these people in. And actually, we also are in talks, we actually got asked to host a state tournament, which is even bigger, for our Babe Ruth program. So, um, it is, it's really nice, but I want to thank you very much, and personally invite you all to, um, our opening ceremonies if you can make it Saturday, February twenty-sixth.
What was the time again?
Excuse me, Saturday, February twenty-sixth at four thirty PM.
Okay.
And thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Do we have anyone else in council chambers for public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to item number five, consent calendar. These are items that are considered routine in nature, and placed on the consent calendar, they will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Tonight, we have five point one, five point two, five point three, and five point four. Is there anyone that would like any of these items pulled?
No.
Okay, then I will need a motion.
Motion to approve consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, six point one, we have a public hearing, two thousand and twenty census, Kingsburg City Council redistricting. Presentation by Jeff Tilton, National Demographics Company, and the sponsor is by the city clerk's office. We are going to open the public hearing. And presentation by Jeff Tilton, National Demographic Company.
Hey, everyone, good to see you again. So, it's virtual again tonight. Uh, I will be, uh, at your final redistricting public hearing to help celebrate the selection and an option of, of a redistricting map for the next ten years. Next slide, please. So, as alluded, uh, last time, uh, we saw each other was October sixth. That was the second of what we call pre-draft hearings, public hearings, and the intention and purpose of those two hearings, September first and October sixth, way back in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, is to educate the public and councilor, uh, on the process, and to solicit input on neighborhoods and communities of interest, uh, in the city. The census data were released, uh, August twelfth, and California took those data and adjusted them by looking at its prisoner population in the California prison system and reallocated those individuals statistically back to their previous jurisdiction. So, it may have impacted or changed some of the official data from, um, the national census, um, somewhat, or maybe not at all. So, here we are, uh, between October sixth and February sixteenth tonight, uh, we have an opportunity for the public to participate in drafting maps in these states, as you will see, drafted two maps, uh, to consider as well. I'd like to honor and recognize those individuals who did participate from the public and, uh, took the time, um, and the courage, if you will, to submit maps for your consideration. I'm going to go through all of those, uh, tonight. And our intention tonight is to attempt to narrow it down to a finalist, not to sound like, uh, America's Got Talent or any of those other types of programs, but we'd like to narrow it down, so, uh, it, it'll bring us into focus, send it into the March sixteenth public hearing. Public and still submit maps, there is a deadline of March second for that. That's one of the reasons we'd like to narrow it down, in case we get a surge of maps and doesn't overwhelm council, uh, as we go through this process. Next slide, please. So, again, uh, for those that are listening to this for the very first time, and my apologies to council for, uh, the third rerun of this, uh, we must follow federal law. We are attempting to get, uh, equal population in each of the five districts in the city, council districts. Um, the courts have allowed us to have a ten percent deviation, um, and you're going to see tonight, there are maps that will meet that, and there's going to be maps that do not. Uh, we want to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act. We do not want to dilute the voting strength of the protected class, and namely, in, uh, the city of Kingsburg, we're talking about the, uh, the Latino population, uh, and we, we measure that through the citizen voting age population through the census. And I'm going to point out, uh, where you are today compared to where you were when you initially, uh, went to district. And there should be no racial gerrymandering. Uh, with that, then we should go over to California's Fair Mass Act criteria, and we must go in this particular order. Uh, the council districts must be geographically contiguous, to the extent practical, and the extent practical of language that is used for all four of these, is we don't want to divide neighborhoods or communities of interest. And we want to have easily identifiable, easily identifiable boundaries, and we want our council districts to be compact. Next slide, please. So, uh, we'd ask, uh, folks to participate with respect to what is your neighborhood, what is the community of interest, and, uh, please don't take offense to this. We didn't get any response. Uh, that is, uh, not rare. Um, it, uh, it occurs, uh, I would sadly say, on many occasions, because I think one of the pieces, uh, one of the variables is not getting a whole lot of information on this, is perhaps, uh, members of the community are happy, uh, or there's, uh, redistricting fatigue, uh, because we have not just cities, but we also have county, school districts, health districts, cemetery districts, fire districts, water districts, all these other folks are going through redistricting too. So, there's only so much, um, out there that you can tap into with respect to getting that input. So, next slide, please. So, here's the summary of the maps that we have. Uh, before we go there, I want to, uh, mention, I talked about, um, equal population and having a deviation of less than ten percent, um, to be, uh, acceptable for consideration. Your current map, the one that was using twenty, uh, twenty-ten data, census data, has a overall deviation of four point seven five percent. And, uh, uh, in, in addition, when we're looking at citizen voting age population, uh, you have in District Five, fifty-four percent, um, Latinos in, uh, as a majority minority district, uh, with respect to citizen voting age population. Then with the two thousand and twenty census, one of the reasons we are here and we're accepting, uh, draft map possibilities, is the current deviation is fifteen point twenty-two percent, so it's well over the threshold that's allowed. And we have this tremendous growth in, I shouldn't say tremendous, that's all relative, but we had growth in District One and District Two, and we had, uh, we had a decrease in District Four, uh, relatively speaking, compared to District Two. With that, we also saw increase in citizen voting age population in the current, uh, council district of, of, uh, District One. So, when we're looking at, uh, maps to consider, um, it's shown through the public drafts and through NDC drafts, that you can get two Latino citizen voting age population districts, and that's what you see here on this table, um, in District One and Five, uh, on four of the maps to consider tonight. You can see that the deviation, uh, with those maps as well, unfortunately, and thank, uh, I would like to again thank the public for submitting maps. Public Map one oh two and one oh five, uh, should not be, uh, considered, they are well above the ten percent, well, not well above, but they're above the ten percent threshold. Public Map one oh two was not contiguous as well. So, we're going to focus tonight on Public one oh one, one oh three, and one oh four, and NDC two oh one and NDC two oh two. Next slide, please. So, this is just a nice little pretty graph, but that's thanks for helping me out. So, here's Public Map one oh one, uh, like the table mentioned, it has a deviation of nine point zero six. Uh, as I mentioned, it has two Latino districts in District One and Five, and there are no council members paired with this graph. Next slide, please. Should be Map one oh three, yes, a deviation of eight point five, no, this one has no CBAP Latino district, and it's, uh, it pairs two council members in District One. Next slide. Map one oh four, uh, it's five point seven six deviation, uh, again, two Latino CBAP districts in District One and Five, and does not pair any council members. Next slide. The, uh, NDC two oh one, six point three six deviation, uh, it has two Latino district, C one and, excuse me, District One, District Five, no council members paired, and, uh, NDC two oh two, next slide, please. Seven point one three, uh, percent deviation, uh, two Latino districts, District One and Five, and no council members paired. Next slide, please. So, as we open, uh, public hearing, or we already did, uh, I think, um, we're going to look for public comment on any of these maps, which ones do they prefer, any modifications? Uh, we bring it back to council, uh, for the same thing, or, or, sorry, Mayor, for, for speaking ahead of you, uh, maybe you want to do that first. And again, the intention is to, uh, come back, uh, finish tonight with a focused map or, or two, uh, it's up to the council. I'm not going to, uh, give you a magic number, but that's, uh, that completes my presentation and, uh, yields a floor back to the mayor.
Thank you. Let me go back to our agenda. C is to open this up to city council discussion before we open it up to, for public comment. So, um, who wants to start?
Can I ask a question to the presenter?
Is he still on there?
I missed, I missed what the acronyms are for. So, can you hear me, sir?
Jeff, can you still?
Yes, I can.
Awesome. Hi, Jeff, this is Councilmember Hurtado. My question for you was, I missed what CVAP stands for?
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry. Um, being a former educator, uh, that uses a lot of acronyms, my apologies.
Okay.
It's citizen voting age population. And citizen voting age population, um, they're not necessarily registered to vote, they're just eligible to vote, uh, or registered to vote, I should say. So, that's what they, like, look into, uh, with respect to the Federal Voting Rights Act, with respect to, uh, diluting the voting strength of the protected class, in this case, would be the Latino population in instead of the Kingsburg.
Meaning that Latinos are the... Okay.
I, I would just like to throw out that maybe we should take one oh three off the table. I know that will open up to public comment also, because when you look at those numbers, like, it moves all of us. There's nobody that could even, I don't know how that would work, because Brandon and I are not supposed to be up for reelection, but this changes everybody's districting number, and so I, I, I don't know, I don't know how we could manage that one, um, unless there was anybody that thought different.
You mean you guys both don't live in the districts currently?
So, it changes, it would change Michelle's current number, it would change mine, it would change Vince's, it would change yours, and it would change all of ours. We would not have the number.
Do you like the way that it's, do you like the way that it's divided up? Can we change just the numbers? So, maybe that's an idea, because like, for example, you mentioned, I would be five, and I think that's super confusing to the residents, we don't want to do that. So, um, I agree with you on that point, but you don't want to get rid of the map, just change the numbers?
Um, if, I would say if we were just taking it, like, how it's presented to us tonight, not to consider that one, but if we were going to talk more about moving numbers, we could talk about that too. That was just my first thought when I was looking through all. Yes?
May I jump in?
Yes.
So, uh, first of all, uh, no council member is ousted based on, uh, a map you select for redistricting. All council members still fulfill their terms. Secondly, um, the, the districting numbers actually have to follow the, the district, uh, uh, the, the city council members, so we could change the district numbers, that's not, that's not an issue at all. So, whoever's in two thousand and twenty-four, those, those district numbers have to stay the same. I hope that makes sense. If, if this was the map that you selected...
So, for one oh three, for us, that would change two to three automatically, numerically, and that would change one to two, is that correct? We would all go back to our original district numbers for that map?
That would be ideal. I, I just feel like it's less confusion for the constituents.
I think we just need to figure out a process of, we got to eliminate some tonight, and whatever that process is, so I think it's really just going to come down to speaking up to which ones you like, which ones we don't like.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Do we want to, um, just in case the public has any input, I know it comes back to us, do we want to open it up to public comment to see if they have any input, and then come back to us? Are we good with that? Okay. So, we are going to open it up to any public comment? Do we have any public comment in the chamber? The numbering? For that, okay. I think we're all still trying to get used to it, huh?
Because I'm District One, I don't want that to change.
Councilmember Purcell, um, I don't know if your mic's on. Come on.
Speak up.
I will speak clearly into the mic. Get closer.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, any other public comment? Okay, we will close. I know, right? We will, we will close public comment and bring it back to, um, council discussion. So, ideally, we would like to narrow it down between these maps. So, do we want to just take turns and maybe talk about which one or couple that we might like?
We talk about which ones, because we're going to eliminate? Can we talk about which ones we dislike the most? And kind of go from there?
Sure.
I'll start off by saying, I'm not particularly fond of, did, you were mentioning one oh three, right, Mayor? Okay, I'm not particularly fond of Public Map one oh four. Um, I feel like that's another, with the, the numbers are similar. I just personally do not like how two is super northeast and then just like drops to the middle, and it's kind of like really stretched out. I would prefer to see a map where, um, like, one and five, they are pretty compact, and you are, like, representative of a good area, but I don't like how that drops down in this one oh four. So, for me, I personally don't like this one. So, I'll start with one I don't like.
Uh, I'll go next. I am not a fan of one oh one. Uh, I don't, I don't like how it stretches my district to less linear, just seems more clustered.
It's also very confusing on the top northeast there as well.
Yeah.
That's just a lot of, like, literal looks like.
I think that's going to be confusing for people to understand which district they're in. I don't like the confusion they cause.
Yeah, four, two, and three will be like, what are we doing? Yeah, I agree. I don't like that one either.
Councilmember Roman?
Um, I agree with everything said so far, the same numbers. I would agree with that.
So, you agree with?
One oh.
No, not liking one oh one?
One oh one, one oh.
One oh four?
One oh four.
I'm sorry, you said one oh one, one oh three, and one oh four?
One oh three, also not liking that one? Okay.
One oh three, one oh four.
Okay. Councilmember Palmer?
You know, the only one I don't like is one oh three. One oh one, I don't have a problem with it. One oh four, I don't have a problem with it. Two oh one's good, two oh two's good. The only one I don't like is one oh three.
You're pretty open, eh?
Um, the only one that I think really stands out, I would agree with the one oh one and the one oh three. The only thing I do like about one oh four is that it gives every one of us, um, or one of the districts, something to do with business. So...
Not really District One.
If my tally was right, that drops us to basically NDC two oh one, NDC two oh two. I don't think anybody chose either of those.
I, that they do not like or that they like?
I don't think anyone chose NDC one, uh, NDC two oh one or NDC two oh two as non-favorable.
As far as two oh one and two oh two, looking at your districts currently, what, what are similar to what you have currently?
For, for two oh two, for three, uh, I like that I keep a portion of downtown. I like to have a little bit of, a little bit of commercial with residential.
Yeah, two oh two, you said?
Two oh two. Two oh two is, out of those two, two oh two is where I would, that would be where my support is.
I would, I would get behind that as well, just because I do feel like each district has the opportunity, um, as you mentioned, Mayor. So, District One right now, um, the way that it's mapped out looks very similar to two oh two, um, in that you can also go down, what is that? It would be Sierra, considered Sierra, right? That crosses the, the freeway. So, there's still some business inclusion there for that district, um, but same with District Five. I know that we might not serve in those districts, but I would love for the next council member or myself to be able to still serve that business in the business capacity, and it doesn't look much different than the one we have right now, which will avoid the confusion for a lot of our constituents. So, for example, um, Mr. Darling here, nothing changes for him, except for, you know, who was elected, maybe, right? So, I really, really like, um, NDC two oh two. And there's, it says no council members paired. That's a, that's a plus.
I like two oh two, because to me, it looks similar to what it is now, currently, so I, I, I have like two oh one and two oh two are my two top, so I would be fine either way, two oh one or two oh two.
I would like to just say what I said a few years ago was, the only thing that I don't like is the current district that I'm in has no business. Like, it's the one that's way out there, does not have more of a, but it doesn't have more of like the demographic of the other parts of town. It's just North Kingsburg, you know? So, um, with no business, unless there's home businesses in there.
It's true. It doesn't. However, you're, you're all...
It's hard to keep things continuous, um, and fit business in there. Like, it's just a...
I think part of the issue that you're going to run into with District Two is that's the way the city is going to continue to grow, um, and it's not going to grow with business on the north end of town, that's going to continue to be, it's not going to
You have all the parks.
And no matter, no matter who serves in that capacity, because this is for ten years, right? So, maybe you'll serve for all of those ten years, but, um, most likely, right, like, it's, like you said, it's going to continue to grow, and there is nothing from stopping any of us, like, I can still advocate for downtown Kingsburg. We all do. Like, I serve on our business improvement district, but I don't necessarily represent that area.
And the North Kingsburg specific plan does call for business to grow out that way.
And, Mayor, I think the only one that gives you any sort of business is one oh four, which I think, is there any other ones that give you?
I like one oh four.
His hand is up.
I like one oh four, too.
Yeah, you know, I want to, uh, and pardon me for, uh, not bringing this up earlier. The public drew these maps and, you know, took the time, and, and when I'm hearing, you know, how things look, et cetera, we ha, we don't just draw districts by arbitrarily, um, you know, putting a line somewhere and, and trying to make it compact and contiguous, et cetera. We have to follow census blocks, and some things are non-negotiable, and District One, on say, for example, NDC two oh two, uh, presents a challenge, uh, because it, the district, excuse me, the census block, no, no district, excuse me, the census blocks are not created equally, um, and they're based on population, um, and... Um, and they're based on population, um, and, uh, District One, actually, in this particular example, you know, creates a problem. If you were to, um, look at, you know, the stuff on the, say, the north side of the, the railroad track there, uh, and then try to drop it into what is District Five, that little, uh, west, uh, portion of District Five sticking into District One. Um, that would throw the deviation way off, as an example, you know? So I think folks who, from the public who tried to design maps, uh, you know, discovered this. Um, you know, the same thing with like District Two. Um, three and four were pretty easy because of census blocks. I mean, you know, they're, they're downtown areas and residential areas that are pretty cut and dry. But when you start getting to areas where there's not a whole lot of residences or, you know, just, uh, a lot of geography, uh, with not a whole lot of folks, uh, it creates, uh, issues, uh, you know, especially with railroad tracks and Highway ninety nine and frontage. You know, they have, they'll have really long, strange looking census blocks, but they have to be filled in and they have to be assigned to a particular district. So that's why I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Honestly, when an issue comes up, we just take care of Kingsburg. You know, that's what it comes down to. Any person calls any one of us. They don't necessarily look at the boundaries. I know that when we're voting that it's different. So, um, I'm fine with the ones that, um, the demographers have either one of them and, and don't know that I have a preference because mine's pretty close to the same in both.
Do we want to look at those two?
I, I, I like staying as, clearly it's not a big, we don't have a full house here. We didn't get a lot of maps. Because I think the citizens like the maps. There's, I think they're still trying to get used to, I still, I know we all still go, oh, you're in districts. And again, like we've all said, I mean, if you're gonna take a call, I don't think any of us have ever said, oh, well, you're in, you know, another council member's district. I mean, we all care about Kingsburg and we're all gonna take a call no matter what. Um, I think they're still trying to get used to this and still trying to get used to the district number. And it's just gonna take time. So as long as we can try to stay as close as possible, that way we're still meeting what the demographers are still trying to figure out for these lines as close as possible, so that that way the Kingsburg's still getting used to it, I think is the best at this point in time. And then in ten years from now, if Kingsburg changes and if the lines get a change more dramatically, okay. But as of right now, I mean, we did it to try to make the demands of what we, what required of us back then. I think we did a, a great job. And here we are again, now that we've had, you know, the census and everything. They're not too far off, you know, the, what they created with two oh one and two oh two, to try to make it as close as possible that we can to where we're at. And then that way, I'm, I'm sure if you, if we quizzed each other exactly all our streets, hopefully we all pass exactly right. We're still all learning that too. So I just want to make sure that we, you know, are, are still making com- uh, citizens comfortable with what we have as well with our districts.
So do we have a preference between two oh one and two oh two?
I prefer two oh two, because then I get to keep part of downtown.
I like two oh two as well. I think those are my top two for sure.
Michelle? Michelle, do you have a preference?
Um, I, I'm happy with either one, so I would be happy to go, you know, e- either way.
The top two then, two oh one?
Yeah, two oh one and two oh two are my two.
Two oh one and two oh two are the top two, yeah.
How much do we want to narrow it down tonight? Because I believe we still have time to submit public maps, correct?
Yes.
February second, public maps.
And I think it's March.
The cutoff was the second of February, I believe.
What's the, what's the submission cutoff for public submitted maps, sir?
Well, it's, uh, March second.
So potentially, at our next meeting, we can choose a map. So we can't choose tonight because we still have time for them to submit.
Right.
Got it.
But we should probably narrow it down.
Yeah, correct.
So if we narrowed it down to these two.
So what I'm hearing is you'd like to bring back NDC two oh one, NDC two oh two, and any public maps that are submitted for your final public hearing?
Yes, please.
Sounds good.
I have a question. Jeff, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome. I have one more question. Back when we did, um, the redistricting in, I believe it's two thousand eighteen. Right? I loved that we had attached a demographics list. I don't know if you were the one who did our maps previously, I believe so. Um, so with that being said, is there gonna be something attached to these maps that kind of lay out, you know, um, the exact demographics of each district?
So, uh, you should have received those, um, and my apologies if they didn't get to you. Uh, each map, uh, comes with a demographic table, um, that has a plethora of data associated with it. It breaks it down by, uh, district, council district. Did you not receive that?
I, I didn't.
Is it published on the website?
Missed it, because I read through the packet and I only see, I only see the maps with the LC.
I'd, I'd have to check with, with Abby, uh, unfortunately she's not here, so.
Yeah.
We just, we didn't include that, uh, in the, in the packet tonight. Jeff, we just, we just included the information in the, in the presentation that you shared with us. But, um, we can certainly, uh, we can certainly get that out if, if, if we have it.
And if possible, maybe add it to the next public comment, so folks can see in the public what that looks like if they didn't get the information.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be sure to include it in the next, uh, presentation for the next public hearing.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, so can close our public hearing? Sat, we have direction for the next one? Alex, Alex? Yep, okay. We'll close the public hearing. And, um.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll bring it back on March sixteenth, I believe is the next date. Six point two crime statistics report for the month of January, um, twenty twenty two and general police department update. Crime statistics report prepared by Kingsburg Police Department Record Supervisor Karina Padilla. And the presentation is by Police Chief Neil Dadian. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor North, members of the council. Well, we've had a significant increase in our thefts and our burglaries, if you'll, uh, you can see by the numbers in the graph. A little bit of bright light in there. The vehicle burglaries are, uh, not residential or commercial, they are vehicle burglaries related, but they all get kind of lumped together in the, uh, uniform crime reports. And the grand thefts are mostly about ninety percent related to the catalytic converter thefts, which everybody's experiencing. However, we have seen, uh, somewhat of a decrease in that over the last couple of weeks into, uh, this month. Um, we made an arrest. So I was here with you last month on the eighteenth and on January nineteenth, we arrested four suspects for catalytic converter theft, basically caught them red handed. Saw and went off. So we've seen a decrease here, so hopefully that continues. But, you know, everybody across the state's getting savaged with this, uh, catalytic converter theft. So, you know, might, might last for a little bit, little while for us. You know, we're gonna feel the effects like everybody else, unfortunately. Uh, I was able to attend the Cal cheese training conference last week in Sacramento and connected with some vendors to review their products for training, personnel, equipment, inventory, software that I've been looking for, for a couple of years now. So hopefully, um, I can find some products that will meet our needs. I'll continue to research and, and look at that. Um, I'm also looking for some better analytics for my use and a better format for the council and public. So I'm exploring some options that are available in the Sheriff's CAD system to which we're connected. And, you know, occasionally I like to drive myself crazy and slip into a deeper decline into, you know, my mental illness, because I just love to grind into stats and analytics if I can. So sometimes the council is the beneficiary of that as well. And I probably haven't pestered you guys for at least four or five years. But I, I've never been really happy with this format. I'd like to change that in some fashion and give you something a little more concise and, um, eye appealing. And I think that would help, uh, our transparency with the public as well. So I'm gonna look at that and hopefully come up with something a little bit better than what we have. And I'll continue to probably grind on that till my last day here. But, um, we'll see how that goes. I have a hiring update. Um, I think I mentioned last night, last time I had one police officer who was getting ready to resign. He was offered a job in Dinuba. That occurred. He went to work there. So we have, uh, that, that created a vacancy. I have an active sergeant recruitment that opened this week, so that's good. Um, I anticipate, uh, a promotion for the sergeant vacancy that was created in the budget and then a lieutenant vacancy that was created in the budget, a backfill for that. So at least two sergeant vacancies in the next couple of months. Um, three police officer vacancies, two that previously existed, and then one that was created but moments ago when you approved the consent calendar. So I appreciate that as well as a record supervisor. I mentioned last time that we were looking for ways to, um, kind of narrow the focus and, um, we have a lot of compliance requirements in law enforcement. And so one of the things that I want to do and probably the, um, I, I think the best way that I know how to, to meet that need is to create another record supervisor position, which again, thank you for, uh, authorizing that tonight. But I'm gonna have one continue to do records and, you know, just all, all of the normal day to day business things, and then one strictly for compliance. Because I don't want to get sideways with legislation that is coming out on a regular basis and, and rapidly evolving as well. So some of that stuff is gonna be mixed up in the courts. It will evolve as court decisions come out. But one of the best ways that I think I can resolve that issue for us and maintain our transparency with the public is to have one person solely dedicated to that. Um, and even in a small agency like ours, we need that uh, staff person to, um, dedicated to specifically compliance. So, uh, I'll be moving in that direction, get a record supervisor vacancy or recruitment open pretty quick. And then a lieutenant, uh, right after that. So, you know, positive things, things are moving well. Um, I've chosen, uh, early, early on, I mentioned this last year, when we created the vacancies through Measure E funds, that I wanted to fill them at the bottom first instead of creating, um, you know, promoting people early on and then creating vacancies at the bottom. That would have helped me, but not the officers out working the field. So, um, I felt it was more important to have them, have people recruited, hired, trained, and, um, not working in the field. Uh, so that gives them a little bit of relief and, and so I'll be working on the administrative end of that for the second half of this fiscal year. Training courses are hopefully back up and running. I mean, uh, we've seen a, a big increase in the ability to send people to training or, or, um, whether that's locally or somewhere else in the state or, um, bring them in uh, to regional areas. So we are doing that. Um, I have a number of people scheduled to go to the Museum of Tolerance for bias training. I have some people scheduled to go to human trafficking training, uh, and as well as a variety of other investigative and specialty training that we have planned for our, our folks. We're a little bit behind on some of the things. And these are just self imposed things, nothing state mandated, but, uh, we're behind some of the training that we've decided for ourselves just because, you know, COVID was a, a pretty heavy factor and all of that. And they can only o- offer so much online. Post actually kind of got flexible in, uh, twenty twenty one about allowing some online training that they previously mandated must be in person. So, you know, that helped out a little bit, but it's always probably better have that in person training and that, that contact and, um, interaction with the instructor right there in the classroom. We recently replaced our pistols that were about twelve years old with new pistols. This was, um, something we were able to do through Measure E funds last year. And it was about almost a year and a half, close to two year project to research that, um, budget for it and then make the purchase. And now the last phase of that is the training for the officers. It's, so it's, it's a good pistol, very cutting edge. It has a, uh, an optic on it, which is a holographic optic, which is, I think, the wave of law enforcement. And so I wanted to get in on the front end of that and get our officers trained. So we sent two sergeants specifically to be instructors on that. And if any of the council members would like to come and check that out at our range, you are more than welcome to do that. Please contact me and I'd be happy to, uh, have somebody walk you through that. Um, training, a little bit more. Um, I was selected to attend the National Command Course sponsored by the FBI back in, uh, Frederick, Fredericksburg, Virginia. That was scheduled for May two to six, and I'll be looking forward to that. So I was very pleased to be one of a, a small group of people across the country selected for that very esteemed course. And just about five o'clock, I got an email that our Prop fifty six grant, which funds our school resource officer, that's a tobacco tax grant, has been extended for one fiscal year. So that's very nice. Yeah. I'm really happy about that, because I was, I've been sitting on pins and needles waiting for the email to show up that, hey, we can reapply for it and we don't. All we have to do is fill out some paperwork, the budget, things like that.
Easy peasy.
The, the money is the same. We might have to, because of cost increase for employees, we might have to, uh, throw a little bit out of the, uh, other funds for it. Um, but we're already funding some of that through Measure E anyway. So I think we have, uh, plenty of, um, money available for the small amount we might have to, uh, front the cost for. And, uh, so I'm very happy about that. The state, again, you know, COVID kind of helped out in this one. They were like, yeah, we're not gonna do this application stuff. We're just gonna, we're just gonna give you an extension. We'll, we'll talk next year, so.
Nice.
It did work in our favor for once, huh?
Great news.
Oh, yeah. So that's the end of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Certainly.
With a Prop fifty six funded, it's a school resource officer. Is the, um, focus still going to be on tobacco prevention?
Yes. So the way the grant.
You said it might change, that's why I'm asking.
Well, I, again, I'm trying to read the tea leaves on what the state might do or might not do, um, you know, and it's just my guess. They, uh, actually, they communicated to us that we are probably one of the, if not the premier agency for following what we have written into the grant, what Mayor North wrote into the grant. And they're extremely happy with our productivity and what we've been able to do. Uh, they're getting a lot of, you know, from other, um, agencies, not just law enforcement, but a variety of, you know, because they fund across the board to private nonprofits, um, cities, counties, school districts, healthcare district, et cetera. They're getting a lot of, eh, we couldn't do anything because of COVID. We're producing. Um, I've managed grants before. I don't like to get caught short on any of that stuff. I don't want, you know, five years from now, I don't want the state coming in auditing and then saying, oh, guess what? You owe us a bunch of money, you know, and interest. And I, I, you know, I'm not gonna put us in that position. So I'm very pleased with, uh, the work product that we've been able to produce. And, um, it, it is just a, it's just a carbon copy of what we already have, so that's what they want. So the way the grant was written is it's a, it's for tobacco prevention and vaping prevention and also a school resource officer. So the officer's primary responsibility is to that, uh, uh, tobacco prevention and intervention and enforcement effort. Because there's some regulatory stuff that we have to do out in the community with the retailers. Uh, and then also, um, do school resource. And then also do school resource officer duties. So I, we never want to lose sight of what our primary responsibility is and then our secondary responsibility, but there's a lot of time for the secondary responsibility.
And our school resource officer has been doing amazing, and that's kind of why I was asking. I would hope that it wouldn't change too much because I like the work that's being done.
Thank you.
Awesome.
I'll pass that on.
And the partnership also is about education. And I know they had at the junior high a night informing parents about vaping. And the influences that has on our young preteens and teens. And I know that our SRO is like right in the middle of helping with all of that, and they've put, they put like vape detectors in bathrooms in different areas. I know at the junior high, I'm thinking they did at the high school also.
Yes, they did, yeah.
Which has been helpful.
And, and the grant managers are fully aware of all of this. They, they see the receipts. They communicated with us, said, oh, yeah, we saw that. We understand what's going on. And they had some really good ideas for us as well. So we have a town hall that we need to do. We're actually going to do two of them. One during Car Show and one during Swedish Festival because we have a, and that was their suggestion, you know. They, I don't know how they knew about Swedish Festival, but they did. And so they suggested, hey, why don't you put a booth out and, you know, you know, hand out materials and interact with the public. So that was a really great suggestion and probably not one we would have thought of, certainly not one I would have thought of, but that came from the administrators in Sacramento, so I was pretty happy to hear that.
Officer Gagnon still the resource officer?
Pardon?
Officer Gagnon still the resource officer?
Yes.
He's being kept very busy.
I have just one comment now, not a question. I know your, your social media person has been there a couple of months now?
Yes. Actually, two of them.
Two months. She does an amazing job. I don't know if it's just her?
No, two of, two of them. I have two volunteers.
Both of those people are doing an amazing job. I really do like to interact and see, because I use Instagram, right? I use Facebook. And it's really exciting to see movement in that part of your department. So I wanted to also give a shout out to those folks and let them know they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that very much, and I will pass that on. And you're going to get a chance to meet them because we're going to have a, you know, swearing-in ceremony for them in the next few council meetings. And so we'll have a, a chance to, to meet them and thank them personally, but I will certainly pass that on. And I appreciate your comments because we do want to have a more robust presence on social media because that's, you know, they're not making me anymore. They're making young people now, right? So that's how you reach them.
It's working. It's looking good. Looking good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other council discussion questions?
Love the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6.3, 2022 Senate District 12 Budget Request. Staff Report and Presentation by City Manager Alexander Henderson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Late on February 4th, we received a memorandum from State Senator Anna Carrero's office requesting a submittal of budget proposals for the 12th Senate District. They had some specific requests, including limiting the request to the most pressing budget priority or projects. And the senator will review for possible funding allocation from the state budget. They're requesting that proposals address critical community services, economic recovery post-pandemic, and essential community and infrastructure needs. Each of the requests and supporting documents are due Friday, February 25th, 2022. Given the short turnaround, staff is bringing the item to council for discussion and direction. Now, we have compiled a brief list of potential projects, but also wanted to get your input. Most of the projects have been discussed previously. One of the items, the fiber optic option hasn't, is in the early stages, so we haven't had formal discussion at the council level. But we have been doing some work at the staff level, which was initially spurred by the infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress. So we do have a couple of items for your consideration tonight. The senior center kitchen renovation, which is approximately $700,000. Improvements to the sports complex, or the proposed sports complex, so anywhere from, you know, a few million to 40 million. And then the fiber optic infrastructure construction, we're estimating that roughly 2 million. I was reminded by Chief Dadian earlier this week that there is a police department remodel that needs to take place as well because of his growing staff, so I'd be remiss if I didn't include that this evening, although I didn't include it in my initial staff report, so. Again, just looking for direction, you know, preferably one project, I think, would be something we would send along and obviously not a guarantee of funding, but want to throw our name in the ring in case there are some projects that potentially get funded for Kingsburg. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council discussion, questions for Alex?
I have a question. So Alex, can you talk a little bit more about what the fiber optic infrastructure construction program or product? Project looks like.
Can you go down one, one more?
I just went through three different words there that I did not mean to use.
So some of this has come together kind of quickly. And really, again, is a little bit in the conceptual phases, but the initial build-out is being spurred because there's a, there's a private company, Vast Communications, that they do a lot of fiber optic build-out for school districts. And so they were recently awarded a contract for Selma Unified to connect all of their facilities to fiber optic, which got that infrastructure as close to Kingsburg as it has been for some time. And so what's actually happening now, if you look at that green line on the screen, that portion of the project is actually going to be constructed probably in the next month or so, and that's being funded by Kingsburg Media Foundation. So they're bringing that line down because it improves the backbone of their network. And so none of that includes any, any city funding. They just had to get approvals for encroachment permit and, you know, putting those improvements in the right of way. But obviously, that's a big component of, you know, getting that into the city center. So our communications hub is near the coffee, the coffee pot park. And so it will run to there. And then we, the red lines that you see there is our proposal for building out that infrastructure and looping the system, basically getting it into all of the neighborhoods in the city. So it really provides the opportunity in the future to drive fiber optic to individual homes, offers us an opportunity from an economic development standpoint. Because having that reliable, high-speed access is something that certain businesses are really looking for. It also, some of those yellow pins that you see on there, most of them are key infrastructure, key city infrastructure sites. So like the pool, all of our water wells also would, would go on fiber because there's some, there's some security that we're looking to improve at our, at our water well sites. All of our city locations and parks would be included as well. So also would help, you know, we obviously have our build-out of our, you know, our public safety security cameras, which are right now operated on Wi-Fi, but if you can get those on a fiber optic network, they are that much quicker and that much more reliable. You're not, you're not relying on a, on a Wi-Fi signal. So again, it's, it's, it's pretty early, but it has the, the potential. I mean, there's not a lot of, you know, municipal fiber optic systems, which we could potentially get to that point. And also, I think it, you know, rural broadband has been a very large focus for the entire state. And so if we can build this out in the city, and then it, it's just, you know, sort of adding onto that infrastructure that then could be tapped on and pushed out into, you know, our rural communities as well. So it's become a really big focal point, I think, also, obviously, just because of the pandemic. You've got so many people working from home. So we, we saw a very large increase in requests for higher-speed internet options for getting fiber into the community just because you've got people working from home and then kids, you know, when they were at home from, you know, from school and zooming. And so there's just a lot of bandwidth that's, you know, being used for that. So it's a, like I said, kind of early, but I think an exciting, you know, potential opportunity for the, for the community.
Is this a discussion we could have with T-Mobile?
Yeah, too. I, you know, I don't know that they do this type of, they don't do fiber. So just for example, you know, we were in conversations with them about getting fiber to their actual site, but because of their timeline, they're utilizing Comcast as, as a backbone. So they don't build out this type of, this type of fiber. They're not necessarily in that, at least right now.
I appreciate the overview of that because I feel what we submit, it's really crucial for us to submit projects that will mean something to that office. So this is one of those projects where if it, where the emphasis is on broadband infrastructure. We know that it's crucial and that we need it, and that it is something that's been a high priority of that senator. So this is a project that I would highly recommend that we submit because the, my computer died, but the, what I read in the budget requests paper that she gave us, right, like the outline, she wants to see disadvantaged rural communities have a leg up. And so I, I really think this is a project that we should consider submitting for some help. You said it's $2 million?
That's a rough estimate for the build-out of the red that you see there.
It says, "Critical Community Services, Economic Recovery Post-Pandemic, and Essential Community and Infrastructure Needs." And if I think back maybe a year or two ago, when there was the request for submittals before, I think we already did the sports complex with her previously. I think it was maybe a year or two ago when we got a different request. And even though that's something that we really want to see in Kingsburg, I don't know that it fits these categories where I think that number one and number three on the list do. And when we're looking at some of the things that you mentioned of, like all of our students that had to go on distance learning, and like the fact that you said Selma Unified did this, right? In Selma, that they all went on distance learning and hopefully we never have to do that again, but something happened in that time was like kids started taking devices back and forth, and teachers started teaching more that way, where it does put kids more at a disadvantage if they don't have that.
Absolutely.
So I would say if it's two, the senior center and this, and if it's one, go big.
Can we submit two and then let her decide on which one?
I think that that's, yeah, your guys' direction.
What about going back also, I'm just going back for playing devil's advocate here. The Tri-County Healthcare District for the senior center? For the kitchen?
So we did, we did submit that last year. I, they did reach out, the healthcare district, you know, their, their grant cycle will be coming up here again soon. So they have reached out to Adam and asked that the senior group submit for their grant project. They didn't specify necessarily the kitchen project, but they just encouraged them to submit something, you know, for their upcoming grant cycle. So certainly that's something that, you know, I think we'll, we'll probably be bringing that back pretty quickly here in March to talk about those specific grants.
I think last time we waited too long with what they wanted to see on paper, like the engineering, wasn't it?
They need specific numbers.
Specific. They needed more specific.
Maybe we can have that this time.
And the guarantee, the guarantee that we would be in that building, I think is what.
The health and safety of seniors is very important to them as well, and that's feeding seniors. Because it needed to be updated, obviously.
Since we're talking about Tri-County, because Chief mentioned, I'm not sure if that was a joke, but I don't think it was, about improvements to the police department headquarters. I believe that that is something we could also try to work on during the Tri-County grant cycle. In the budget request paper that she, that Senator Carrero sent us as well, she was speaking about the office wants submit, submittals to have help for people who, domestic violence and like, you know, things like that. So that does fit in that category, but I feel like if we just narrowed this one down to maybe the broadband and another project and then worked with the, because I don't want to leave that out, right? So maybe be able to submit the police department's project and the seniors to the Tri-County, then we're still, we're still looking for pots of money somewhere. And we're not leaving anything out, but we're just being strategic about where we're placing what, because we know we have a good chance with the broadband or fiber optic application because it's something she prioritizes. And Tri-County is always a great partner. And I feel like if we give a really good application for the police department, we'll probably be likely to get that, considering the partnership in the past.
Well, they're all good projects, and even the police department. I mean, I'm, if for some reason we don't get funding, I just want to make sure we have a backup plan that we could still submit someplace else. So that's why I'm just putting it out there. If we don't submit with the senator's office, then what's our backup plan here, too? So if we look at prioritizing, if, if we're going to submit with the senator's office, then if, where else could we submit for these other projects? Because I think they're all really good projects to submit.
Submit to both. One doesn't work out.
Including the police department chief.
The smile. I'll kind of voice my opinion specific to fiber optic. I think we're getting more to a point with fiber optic that it's going to become a necessity for towns. And when I look at these projects, the senior center is important. I'm not dismissing that. The senior center serves an important part of our population, but it's a small part of our population. The fiber optic coming into town does a lot. That's going to serve everyone. That brings businesses in, we're more appealing from a business standpoint for upload and download speeds. It's more consistent for our public safety. Because bad weather, things like that, we don't have to deal with, you know, Wi-Fi radio concerns, things like that. It's, you know, this is a very rough overview of what fiber would look like. This is a foundation. It's going to spread further, and that's when it becomes more available to residents. When it becomes more available to residents, if this is city-owned infrastructure, if we lease this to a third-party company, like a local third-party company, this internet provider, we can put stipulations in there that some of our lower-income residents have a flat rate. So everyone in town can have the same internet speed. Everybody can afford it. And that's going to benefit everybody. The other thing that it does is when we bring fiber in, that allows us to control more of that cost. We're not relying on these big, major companies who can change their rates whenever they want and phase people out. It gives us significantly more local control, but it's a huge investment. And even with this $2 million investment, this isn't going to get us everything we want. But I think what this is going to do is, as these other grants come up, if we can foundationally say, we've already invested into this infrastructure, you know, this will peel off into future public safety grants, into future education-related grants, lower-income development grants, business grants, everything else. So I look at this as this is a foundation for us to build on and make us a very, very unique town to have fiber optic like this throughout the town. I, I think it's a great project. And for me, this would be 100% of my support is for fiber on this.
I love everything that you just said. I absolutely agree. And I think that what she wants, right, is let me know how this is going to help your community. You just painted a really beautiful picture of exactly what this will do. And it is the foundation, meaning we can continue. This is in public safety. This is helping our children. This is helping low-income folks. This is overall where that progress, like we're moving forward as a city and also doing something that is pretty cool for a town of our size, right? Like, we already know I can go downtown to this park here, coffee pot, and I can jump on Wi-Fi. When I tell people that in different cities, it's just a part of what makes Kingsburg so great. So I, I agree. And I, I don't know if we want to do one or two or just one and hope we get it. What are you guys thinking? Project.
I don't like the muddy waters, personally.
I think just one would be fine.
And this is just my opinion. I think if we put forward a clear direction and we're all in on one thing, I think it's more impactful. And I hate, I hate having the discussion outside of council about which is more important, infrastructure, senior food, you know, I don't- which is more important, infrastructure, senior food. You know, I don't want to put that on her plate. I want us to be kind of united, whichever one council decides to move forward. So it looks like we're united. We agree. This is the future of our town. This is the direction that we're going. We want your support. We want to partner with you. I don't want to partner with somebody who isn't even sure what they want.
I have one more question. When, because our district is changing. So from what I understand, we're going to be Senate District 16 after this election cycle, correct? So with this budget request in Senate District 12, let's say it gets approved, does that change anything when we move from the, to be 12 to 16 or 14 or whatever our district is now? Is that changing, does that muddy anything up with this application?
Yeah, I mean, it'll change the, I mean, obviously the district numbers are changing, but.
We still qualify for the project.
If it gets approved before the district changes.
For this fiscal.
Right. Okay. So as long as we qualify and she accepts it, then we're good.
It is. I mean, she's looking to tap into some of the, the state budget for this, so I don't.
And advocating for us on that. Okay.
I'm going to get a approval denied before we change.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense.
That's a good question.
I think it's hel, I think it's helpful, whether they fund it or not, to get it on her radar though, either way, because, you know, they haven't really come down with the, how their, you know, the federal infrastructure bill is going to be parsed to the states. And so she, you know, even if we're unsuccessful in this one, having an advocate for future funding, you know, and, and, you know, developing the project more, I think is, is beneficial as well.
Yes.
I think definitely number one would be fiber optic.
I have one more question. Oh, last thing, because I really, really want this to get accepted. I want the application to really convey everything that Councilmember Purcell said. So I don't know if you already have that written out, like. I don't know who's doing it.
I will watch, I will watch.
Book live right now.
I don't know who's doing it.
I don't know if anybody can hear my great speech.
I hope he was speaking, I hope he was speaking loudly into the microphone, because the way that he laid it out was exactly what it, perfect. Give that to Alex, because the way that you said all of that is going to catch her attention, right? It's going to catch that office's attention. So I, I want it to paint that picture. And let's keep our fingers crossed, I guess.
Maybe we'll just submit it with a vignette of Councilmember Purcell's.
Bingo.
Can we get t-shirts made?
Let's do it.
Project one.
I'd also be in support of that. I mean, it's a lot of staff time and staff work. Instead of splitting it between two projects to do one, because it's a quick turnaround. You have like a week? Is it about a week?
Yeah, I think, I think we'll be okay. I mean, unrelated to what your guys' decision is tonight, I have a meeting about the fiber optic tomorrow, so I'll have some more information on that. I've met with the, with Congressman Valadeo's office on it as well, so they're, they're working on it too.
Awesome.
You only needed direction from us on that item, correct?
So just so I'm clear, are we just the one?
Yes.
That's good.
All right. Thank you.
Item. Item seven, council reports and staff communication, 7.1, Community Services Commission. We have not met again since I reported out last time. 7.2, Public Safety Committee.
We meet early next month.
7.3, Chamber of Commerce.
Have not met. Oh, you said.
I went for you, yeah.
I did not.
I think it was like the night, maybe the ninth, eighth or ninth, something like that. So we met and it was right after the dinner. So a little debrief about the chamber dinner and then conversations about changing out one of the, they used to do ladies' night out. They don't. They want to do the truck show in place of that. And then the conversation was about the car show in April. I think that's their next big event that's coming up. They're collecting sponsors for that right now. 7.4, Economic Development.
They have not met.
7.5, Finance Committee.
Have not met.
7.6, Planning Commission, we have not met. 7.7, SKGSA.
I did not meet, but Councilmember Purcell went on my behalf. I wasn't able to make it. So Councilmember Purcell?
Didn't. I think it was on the ninth. We met and approved the developer impact study. Impact fee study.
No changes, right?
No changes.
7.8, Downtown Business Improvement District.
Our Kingsburg BID will be meeting tomorrow, so I'll have a report for you at the next meeting.
7.9, Council of Governments.
Will be meeting next week, but I do have a, a quick update on State Route 99, Selma to Fowler Rehab Project. That's always exciting, right? So they're making progress from Selma to Fowler. The purpose of this project is to rehabilitate pavement on State Route 99 in northbound and southbound direction from McCall Avenue, undercrossing to the city of Selma to the North Merced Street, undercrossing in the city of Fowler. In January, crews detoured northbound traffic onto the paved highway medium for public and worker safety, State Route 99 at Manning Avenue. On-ramp and off-ramp are closed to the traveling public. This will be a four-month closure. According to the contractor, the, the plan is to open Manning Avenue ramps by mid-April 2022 and will close Merced Street, off-ramp and Fowler. Motorists traveling on the highway are encouraging, are encouraged to use Manning Avenue off-ramp and use the Golden State Boulevard to access Merced Street in Fowler. Merced Street off-ramp is scheduled to reopen by mid-June of 2022. So that is the update. That's going to be tough for those businesses. I know in Merced Street, they're in Fowler, but so they're telling everybody then to take Manning Avenue once that opens up. So that is the update that I have for you on that.
Thank you. 7.10, Councilmember Reports.
I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to Public Works, to Daniel, to all the folks who helped make that crosswalk possible at West Lindquist and Avenue A. When I saw, I was very excited. I mentioned to my grandmother that there was a constituent who's going to be very excited about it, lives down the street. And she said, "Well, I need you to let the council and the whole city know that I wanted that too." So I thought I would let everybody here know that my Nana is very, very excited, because it was all her idea. But also that has been a long time in the making, so we're really excited to see that happen and for the safety of our children down that busy, busy road. Second, I wanted to just chat about the fact that City Manager Alex Henderson, myself, and then the new Executive Director and Associate Director of the Chamber of Commerce were able to attend the cherry blossom ceremony in Fowler.
Blossom Trail.
Blossom, the blossom trail opening in Fowler. I'm sorry, I always think of cherries. It was awesome. It was a really, really great ceremony. We were able to connect with other cities and hear updates about what their chambers are doing. Our, our Associate Director of the Chamber of Commerce, Lisa Schwartz, did an amazing job telling folks about what we're up to, our car show, Swedish festival and all the things that we do. And that's about it. That's what I have to report.
Thank you. Just a quick update at out at SKF. Ben Munoz, who's been the General Manager out there for a very long time, is retiring. And March 4th, this is last day, and we're having a retirement party for him. And tomorrow we have a special meeting, looking at putting together an interim general manager out there in the meantime. So I'll give you guys an update on that, once I know who our interim will be. Councilmember Purcell?
Reiterate what Mr. Garcia said for the opening ceremonies on the 26th at 4:30.
I just had a comment. I've really enjoyed how our businesses have really taken a lot of ownership downtown, especially during the holidays. And it doesn't matter, like, if it's a huge holiday or like a smaller one. It was really fun watching all, like, people from out of town taking pictures downtown for Valentine's Day and just enjoying downtown. So just a comment. 7/11, City Managers Report.
Yeah, just the, the first item, I know we've been talking a little bit about holding separate workshop dates for the ARPA funding, so I just threw up a handful of potential dates. I'm not, not all three of them, but I don't know if there's one that works best for the council. So the 24th of February, which is next Thursday, March 9th is a Wednesday, and 15th is a Tuesday. So I don't know if there, any of those dates work better than the others.
What time would you like to have these six?
Probably six.
Six, okay.
Does, is next week enough time to get, to advertise and get information out? Should we look at March?
That's fine.
And then you'll maybe be fully staffed?
Yeah, well, yeah, when we put this one together, yeah, that's a good point. We had more staffing. So, yeah, so maybe.
So maybe look at the March dates, just a suggestion? I'm good on either. I could do either day. You're good on either day?
Either in March, yeah.
You're good. Ninth?
Let's do the ninth.
Okay. The ninth?
Three nine.
And what time again?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
And then just a couple of, a couple of the brief updates. Get lots of questions about La Neva Villas, so about seven months past the initial expected completion at this point. So PG&E has completed their work. There's some issues now with AT&amp;T trying to splice over their infrastructure. So if you drive out there, you'll see that the power poles are still up, so AT&amp;T, or PG&E is, is done. AT&amp;T was supposed to have it completed by the end of this week. We're being told now it will be by the end of next week, and the poles will be down, which then will allow us to finish the pave out and do the other work. So fingers crossed that, that that holds true. The Matts, if you've been over there, Mattson Avenue is closed right now from Sierra to Stroud, so that work is still on schedule to be completed here in the next, in the next few weeks. So I, I think the asphalt will actually go in starting, starting tomorrow. But then, you know, some of the final things like striping and things like that will take a few more weeks, but that's moving along. And then we had a catch-up meeting today with T-Mobile and their construction representatives. So they're, they're still on schedule, looking to get occupancy by the end of March still, shooting for starting their, their in-person trainings at the Kingsburg Center, I think the week of April 11th. So assuming that still works, we were working with them, we're working with them pretty closely now on their signage. So they're planning to replace the signage that abuts. There's an existing monument sign there that has all of the businesses that are in that center. So Salazar's and Me and Ed's and that. So that sign will come out and a new one will go in. It'll have, it will still have room for, for those businesses, but there will be a new one there. They're installing two Majentadoll horses a little further into the property, but if, so if you're driving in to the main entryway, if you kept going, sort of their, their first, the first area there where the, the trees are, there will be two going in there. They're going to be replacing, there's an existing former Big Kmart sign. It's on a larger pylon sign, and, and below it is a faded former Burger King sign. So those will both be coming down and T-Mobile one will be going up. They'll be painting that as well. And then they're looking to put some signage on the Business Park sign as well, but we're, Mike and I are still working through some issues with regards to the ownership of that sign. So it stems back from when the Business Park was first created. So it's just an update on T-Mobile.
Thank you. Item eight, Future Agenda Items. We have none that were submitted under that. Item nine, Adjourn our Regular Kingsburg City Council Meeting. One of my kindergarteners asked me to ask Alex a question for him. He wants to know if his daddy can go use his tools to fix a squeaky swing at the coffee bar. His dad sent him the ask.